...local law for the county of Albany, New York prohibiting sale of tobacco products and licensed health care institutions, pharmacies, retail establishments containing pharmacy and Albany County. Albany County Farmers, Albany, New York at 7:15 p.m. on Tuesday, April 24th, 2013. And according to the county legislature, this director of cosmetics with such parents and employees contained unnecessary information in accordance with the whole regions of law and tabithas of qualification are entirely for the public.
My dear speakers, according to the order remains up here on the list up here in front. Speakers are in five minutes. Speaker may not ask questions of legislators, legislators may not ask questions of the speakers except for clarification purposes. First name on the list, please. Good evening, everybody. Pharmacies claim to be dedicated to protecting and promoting the health of their customers. Still major chains like CBS and Rite Aid sell tobacco products such as cigarettes, cigars, chewing tobacco, etc. They often place these dangerous items mentioned tobacco cessation days like nicotine and patches. No pharmacy could in good faith claim that they are selling these products to protect and promote their patrons' health. The World Health Organization estimates that tobacco products have been responsible for about 100 million deaths over the past century. Just imagine what this number might increase to over the next century. I've written this better than tenfold, just think about that, it's brilliant. As a career Air Force pilot, I visited every nation in the world performing embassy support and special mission flights. It is interesting that in my travels, I never saw a pharmacy selling tobacco products anywhere in the world except here in the United States. Despite recommendations by the International Pharmaceutical Federation that pharmacies refrain from selling tobacco products, most chain pharmacies in the United States continue to keep in cigars, cigarettes, and tobacco merchandise on their shelves. Some places in America, San Francisco and Boston are examples, already have instituted laws prohibiting tobacco sales at pharmacies, but these laws have barely made a dent on the national level. There is no justifiable health reason that pharmacies in our nation should continue to sell these products. Therefore, I am asking the members of the Albany County Legislature to institute and support policies that would prohibit the selling tobacco products in the capital region. Let's get the trend started here so that all the other counties throughout the state of New York will follow our example. Our citizens deserve a single unified message from our political leaders that this practice needs to be stopped. This is also on a personal level. The last time I came before you, I had mentioned that my 46-year-old son, three years ago, aged 43, had a heart attack. When he went into the hospital, when they opened the box, it had luggage about 95 to 98 percent. All of it caused because it was a heavy tobacco smoke. What filled his veins and his arteries? Nothing but the tars and the dinkdink and all the other arteries put into tobacco products. I remind him that he had a six-year-old and a three-year-old, show them pictures of them every time I go there and I see them pretty white, cigarette out, but then I'm in. The other thing that happened, I'll simply say, I went down to New York City. There was a program put on there by the Yankees, the former ballplayers. And I ran into two other of my former teammates when I played in the Yankee organization, the Triffords. Of the 25 people that were on the roster with us at that time, 34 of us live today. The vast majority of the ballplayers have passed away this year because of tobacco products. I think you know that back in mid-fifties, it was common for everybody to smoke. And of course, ballplayers have put shaw in their mouth. And this of course leads to various kinds of cancers that these then children died from. I also hope that all of you have been watching TV. And there's an ad on there that reminds me of my favorite uncle who passed away from the effects of smoking. And his last two years are fighting utterly, utterly miserable. The ad shows him when he died, and then over in the bathroom, over a basin, coughing and wheezing and choking and hardly able to breathe. I'm sure you've seen it. And this is what our kids are looking forward to, they get involved with tobacco. I have the privilege of teaching at the Air Force Academy and my youngest son graduated from West Point. These two institutions are dedicated to the idea of leadership. Leadership requires special people. You are here as legislators for our county. You are special people. Therefore, we need your leadership in this program. And I hope to depend on you to take this into consideration and begin the trend here. I hate the idea of Boston being first against New York.
I'm here this evening as a sister, and I apologize in advance. This is hard for me to top now. My sister started smoking when she was 17 years old. It caught up with her six years ago at age 52, when she had a stroke. It left her permanently disabled. She has one sore working leg and one working arm. Her bladder and bowels don't work, she can't control them. She depends on someone to feed her, to do everything for her, to turn on the television, to order tea or clean. And it's really, really hard to watch. And I know the fact that my sister could buy cigarettes in a drugstore, allow her to discount the warnings on cigarette packages and the warnings that got increasingly more dire over time. Because she could go to the drugstore, pick up her daughter's asthma medicine and her cigarettes at the same time. And later, she'd go to the drugstore to pick up her granddaughter's asthma medicine and her cigarettes. And was able somehow not to believe the connection between the asthma and the smoking in the house. And I really think the fact that she could go to buy cigarettes at a place where you go and get medicine had an impact on her experience in that way. And sadly, my, her daughter started smoking at a younger age than she did, at age 15. And I know children smoking is a big part of the problem. And her grandfather started smoking at 14. And it's really, really sad to me to see an entire family just pretty destroyed by this. And, you know, I know smokers who will say, you know, they don't really believe the warnings of earth dire as the government says they are. Or they watch the ads with the people on TV and they're like, well, that only happens to a few people, that's not gonna happen to me. Because they don't want to believe it. And I have to tell you, if you can buy your cigarettes at the corner of happy and healthy, it's easy to delude yourself into thinking that it's not as bad as you're told it is. And the other thing that's a real concern for me is that Walgreens, who probably have heard this, is opening what they call take care clinics inside their pharmacies. There's one on the internet, I will throw this in open yet, there's one company that's connected to this, not open yet. And so, not only will you be able to buy your cigarettes where you buy your medicine, it's gonna be like going to the doctor's office and getting cigarettes on the way out. And I think we need to think ahead to what that's gonna look like when pharmacies are treating patients and suddenly poisoned.
My name is Josie Felicia. I'm 84 years old, and I have lived all my life in Albany County. This is the first time that I really felt compelled about coming to New York to speak. For years, I worked in a house, restroom pharmacy at the front register, surrounded by cigarettes right by the candy. It always bothered me, and as a senior citizen, I'm in the drugstore now, more than ever, getting my prescriptions filled. I still see that the cigarettes are still there, but things are even worse. Now, they even market cigarette packs that look like candy. And if you don't believe it, see it. Now, what do the kids and our grandparents think when they see this? So, I'm begging you, please pass the law to protect all our children.
My name is Sam Ray, I'm 53 years old. I'm pretty simple in Bronx, I can tell by my great accent. Years ago, growing up, 60s, 70s, 80s, you never went into a house where anybody was not smoking. Is smoking cars, is smoking flash, is smoking cars, professors, people, that ride in a truck with a cigarette in it. One time, I was down in a restaurant with my son, he was in first grade. Every day, channel restaurant, France, it's white, and my son yells at mommy, you do drugs. And I looked, I'm like, oh, dear boy. Mommy does not do drugs, you do drugs, mom, you smoke drugs. I'm like, what drugs does mommy smoke? Cigarettes. And I'm looking like, oh my god, I never thought of that. So, I will say that I still smoke. I have been on and off every patch, inhaler, gum, L'Alcindor. I have been to therapy class for my dog. I have quit, and I've gotten up, and stress caused me to start smoking again. I have literally got into my car, 2 o'clock in the morning, not even worrying about the deer, I think, to both my cats and cigarettes. Now, I mean, that's insane, to say the least. My son came home one day, and I was paying him attention, and poor cigarettes my father used to smoke, green, white packages. They changed the packaging, and it looked like, if he even can, it was a blue container. And he goes, mom, they look like meat, come to go like this, and look, I'm like, oh my goodness, I never realized. Here's the candy and there's the cigarettes. The only thing I begged my son to do, and I said, I know I'm a hypocrite, and I know this sounds weird, please, advocate to, do not start smoking. It is the hardest thing in the world to hear about. I spend a lot of money on fresheners, perfumes, candles, still has more, everyone else is still smoking. But I'm just saying, it really has to stop, these kids cannot be pressured into this anymore. Signs, those little labels on the side of cigarettes, they don't scare me. The commercials don't scare me, I've had a brother-in-law bleed out from lung, lung cancer, 42, four children. My father has died from lung cancer, I keep thinking in my mind, it's never gonna happen to me. So, please, it's ridiculous, you walk into a pharmacy, you go here, here's the cigarettes and candy and library, and back there is where you have to get your medication. It just doesn't make any sense. So, please, if you can, sell, thank you.
My name is Jessica Reddick, and I'm a pharmacy student in Albany College of Pharmacy and Health Sciences. I'm here to share my thoughts on proposed local law D regarding tobacco-free pharmacies, which is currently being considered from the Local Health Committee and Finance Committee. As a pharmacist, I'm dedicating my career to the well-being of my patients. I aspire to assist my patients in making the best decisions in order to ensure they live healthy lives. Allowing the sale of tobacco products in pharmacies prevents me from fulfilling this obligation to my patients. As you all know, tobacco has been proven to cause cardiovascular disease, lung cancer, and respiratory diseases. I am strongly opposed to providing my patients with the means to cause them to have such terrible distress. I am committed to disease prevention, not disease progression. It would be inconsistent for me as a pharmacist to dispense prescription and non-prescription medications that will help treat diseases and also sell tobacco products that cause disease. Being forced to sell tobacco products would make it incredibly difficult for me to aid patients in smoking cessation. How are patients trying to quit supposed to choose relatively expensive nicotine replacement therapies over tobacco cigarettes on a nearby spot? In addition, it has been scientifically proven that patients in recovery often revert back to their addiction after receiving triggers from their environment, such as seeing tobacco products at the checkout counter. Why should we tell these quitters? Selling tobacco products in pharmacies is not only a matter of patient health, but also a matter of professional ethics. First off, it is a ethical dilemma for pharmacies to profit from the sale of harmful products in addition to providing patients with goods and services to better their health. Secondly, as pharmacists, we swear to live by a code of conduct that involves our commitment to the welfare of our patients and avoiding actions that compromise dedication to the best interest of our patients. Providing patients with tobacco products disregards this code and only benefits those to profit from the sales. No matter your affiliation, we all should make public health a priority. The prevention of addiction and tobacco-related diseases is preferable and much less expensive to society than treatment of these conditions. Also, please consider making one small step towards creating a world devoid of tobacco taxation. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carrie Snyder, and I'm Assistant Director of the Center for Public Health and Tobacco Policies at New York Law, Boston. We are grant-funded through the Department of Health of the VR State and the Vermont. And we provide policy support services to their tobacco control programs in addition to some other programs. I'm here today not to provide legal advice about the legality of these types of regulations, nor am I here in lobby. It was, you know, expressed in a forward opposition to your proposal in front of me. But I did want to comment and provide some information about the government authority that's often questioned when it comes to these types of tobacco control policies. It is the role of responsibility of government to govern for the health safely and well-being of its residents. And certainly, in exercising this responsibility, governments routinely regulate the sale of consumer goods. We need firearms, we need dairy products, alcohol beverages, et cetera. So, reducing tobacco use certainly falls within that curfew. And one perfectly appropriate way of reducing tobacco use among residents is to limit the types of outlets that are permitted to sell tobacco products. Just as alcohol is often needed to a particular type of retailer. Now, tobacco industry has history of distorting truth in opposition of many regulation of these products. And, well, again, I'm not here to provide legal advice that can say that legal arguments that the industry has put forth against regulations of this type limiting tobacco sales in pharmacies have very little value. They often, the industry often comes in and says, these present regulations are violation of our rights, that restricts our commercial speech rights. They sometimes say that it's preempted by the federal cigarette passage statute, which promotes cigarettes. And these arguments have been made in other jurisdictions and jurisdictions. Another argument that they made is that state courts, local regulation. And our review of New York State law indicates that local jurisdictions, including county jurisdictions, do have the authority to regulate the sale of tobacco products. Again, San Francisco was the first municipality in the country to prohibit the sale of tobacco products in pharmacies. Made you admit with just those arguments and failed. Since then, Massachusetts has 56 municipalities that have passed similar restrictions and not one has been challenged. So, while I can't say that there won't be opposition to Austin, because I can't say that it looks like they will not agree with them that there are 56 jurisdictions with us. Additionally, other tobacco regulations have been upheld in New York State itself. Local jurisdictions have adopted stricter regulations on vending machines, as well as self-service displays, and they have been upheld. In closing, I just want to say that restricting tobacco sales is a perfectly appropriate way for a local government to improve public health and challenges our ability to succeed. I do want to say, I was asked a question earlier about a possible, a possible question about definitely pharmacies presenting a bill that it might extend to more than just pharmacies. And I'm not sure that that is a valid argument either. But I did want to say that we take a look at this, and an alternative might be to the pharmacy as registered pursuant to Section 68 of the Minnesota statute. Thank you very much. Not that I know of, and that's going to depend on how many retailers are affected in a particular jurisdiction. What studies do show is that reducing the density of tobacco retailers results in increased sales. So, in theory, it should not be that. It certainly reduces the access to tobacco products.
Do you know of any other locality, municipalities, states of New York that have already passed no legislation for cannabis in pharmacies?
I do not.
So, this would be, this would be the first one, the state of New York? Do you have an opinion as to legality of the proposal that Mayor St. New York has put forth, to promote the access to the nation purchasing rights since 21?
Oh, I heard that. Other jurisdictions have done that, certainly the, the New York, well, I say, Justice County has raised their age to 19, so about 21. And I know several jurisdictions in Massachusetts have also raised the age to 19, so I'm looking at 21, but I don't know if the jurisdiction has actually raised it that high.
I was just promising, you have a fire on everybody's desk about the local authorities' tobacco sales in some pharmacies in Massachusetts? And when you look at the effective locations, I know there's Quest Shop, a lot of them, Walmart, Kmart. Can you explain how they do it, if they're just not selling tobacco products in their pharmacy, or is it the whole entire store?
It's the entire store. Any store with a pharmacy containing cannabis is prohibited from selling tobacco products. The only exception is the hospital, which has as low a resale and wholesale. So, they are allowed to continue their wholesale operations, sell to registered retailers, but they cannot sell to consumers. Thank you.
So, I just want to introduce myself as the kid who yelled in that fancy Italian restaurant that my mom smokes drugs. The last time I went in a fancy Italian restaurant, I don't believe I did that. So, I just want to start off with a really startling fact that the Surgeon General released last year, that 3 million high school students smoke cigarettes. 3 million. How can you compare that many people alone, Albany County? I'm not that sure of more, but even worse, 600,000 middle school students. I think I was 14 when I got out of middle school, so 600,000 of those. And I have friends that, my friends, that are under 18 and they smoke. And I try and try and try again to, you know, some to quit smoking and stuff like that. And if they continue, they're gonna be, they could be, become one of the one-third of young smokers that will die pretty much early. And that's kids that won't have their own kids later on, or sit in one of these seats or even become president. So, like my friends, 9 out of 10 smokers start before they're 18 years old. So, even before they legally start smoking, 90% of smokers start. And just in New York State alone, tobacco companies spend $1 million a day. I don't think, I haven't even seen a million dollars. So, what they can do with a million dollars is, in my opinion, compared to what charities, I'd like to call that, with a million dollars. So, and I've lost a lot of loved ones, like my grandfather, to smoking and stuff like that. And just tobacco-related illnesses. And I really don't want my friends to start going down that path and die pretty much early. So, I hope you consider the bill. Thank you.
Hello, I am Judy Brightmire, and I am Director of the Capital District Tobacco Free Coalition. I have heard my quote across up here, it's right. The Capital District Tobacco Free Coalition is a community-based program that works in all these Anthony and Wes County. We're funded from the New York State Department of Health, the Bureau of Tobacco Control. And our mission is to prevent youth initiation to tobacco, to decrease exposures at least when they smoke, and to help smokers quit. In 2012, the Surgeon General produced a report on preventing tobacco use among youth and young adults. Their report showed that the evidence consistently and comparatively points the intentional marketing of tobacco products to youth as being a cause of young people's tobacco use. Simply stated, tobacco industry marketing causes youth tobacco use. Research shows that the more displays and marketing of tobacco that you see, the more likely they are to smoke. Albany County actually has a higher number of licensed tobacco retailers per child than the state average, with one retailer for every 162 youth that are in Albany County. As opposed to the state rate where it's one retailer for every 194 young people. And there's actually 657 tobacco retailers in Albany County. This map here shows, these little blue dots are the retailers, of course, centered around the city. What was also interesting is that they're centered around schools. I'll leave this up here, you can edit it, you might look at it later. The little flags are the schools, and you'll see that the frequently tobacco retailers are centered around schools. So, 657 places where you can buy tobacco in Albany County. There, of those, 63 are pharmacies or stores that contain the pharmacy. Of those 63 that are pharmacies, those stores that contain the pharmacy, 14 of them already do not sell. And that includes six independent pharmacies, four hospitals, two Targets, one Walgreens. And that Walgreens is actually in a medical complex. and that Walgreens is actually in a medical complex, and Columbia Order Pharmacy. So that's kind of the breakdown of what we're talking about, when we talk about the pharmacies that sell tobacco in, or the pharmacies that don't sell. There's 49 places that do sell, 49 pharmacies, stores that contain a pharmacy that do sell tobacco in Albany County. Of course, it's not surprising that the independent pharmacies don't sell. I mean, they know that in Congress, to sell a deadly product at the same time that dispenses medicines that treat the disease is caused by tobacco use. Youth tobacco use is still a significant problem in the capital region. Based on the recent youth tobacco survey, tobacco use rate in the capital region is higher than the state average, which is, in Albany County, 17% of high schoolers, in the capital region, 17% of high schoolers smoke as opposed to 14.7% statewide. That survey also showed that 95% of capital region youth report exposure to the pro-tobacco messages and advertising. A third of those youth that do start smoking will die from their tobacco use. In order to have a generation of tobacco for youth, we must decrease that exposure to tobacco marketing. Communities in Massachusetts have already decreased the density of retailers by ending sales of tobacco with pharmacies and stores that contain a pharmacy. In more than 15 municipalities, from Boston to the Berkshires, you can walk into a CVS or Rite Aid and no longer be confronted with that 50 square feet of tobacco products and their advertising. Massachusetts is putting an end to the Congress message that a place of health can sell a product that will kill half of its users. In Massachusetts, there's now 127 CVSs, 68 Walgreens, 60 Rite Aids that no longer sell. There's 14 Walmarts, four Hennepers, and three Price Shoppers. And I actually had to go and see it to believe it, so I took a road trip out to the Berkshires and, you know, snap some pictures. Instead of, instead of the tobacco products being next to nicotine replacement therapy, so instead of the stop smoking center being right next to the start smoking center, they've now taken the tobacco out and instead there's electronics up here, other high-priced items that when I spoke to the retailers, when I spoke to the cashiers and the managers of these stores, they said, "These are the items that are frequently get stuck into the pocket and walk out the door with people." So now they have the ear mugs that cost 25 hours back behind the counter where they can have better, you know, track of their items. And I also asked them, "How was it when the, when the new regulation went into effect?" I said, "What happened? Was it, was it a problem?" And they said that, you know, one day, the day that the law went into effect in Massachusetts and the community in Lee Harris Thomas's person, the truck pulled up, they delivered the regular deliveries to that CVS, and it took the tobacco products out, and it was, it was no big deal. Customers didn't seem to have a problem with it. I actually put on your desks a copy of all the communities that no longer sell in Massachusetts that have passed ordinances that they don't sell. And I also included a couple of studies that were done to show the impact, economic impact of what these bans have done in San Francisco, I think is one of the studies, and the other one is from Ontario. And with 30 seconds left on the clock, I will just share that both of those studies, one in Ontario showed that there was more pharmacies that opened the year after the ban, and in San Francisco that shoppers did not change their shopping habits. Tobacco products continue to be the most deadly product sold in America, killing half of the users as when use is intended. Governments have responsibility to protect the health and well-being of their constituents. Decreasing the density of tobacco retailers by ending sales of tobacco with pharmacies will help raise the generation of tobacco for you and let the healthy all grow.
Hi, good evening. It's a pleasure to speak to you tonight and to listen to so many people that are raising such personal and pertinent issues as the issue of selling tobacco products in pharmacies. I live in the city of Albany, at 51 North Madison. For those who don't need to know that, I live across from the end of the state high school and about three blocks north of a CVS on Madison Avenue. We have all been touched by the devastating effects of tobacco use on people and families, and we have really heard very personal and touching stories this evening. We know that youth smoking continues to be a problem. Judy pointed this out. Tim, you spoke earlier, told us this, and research shows that kids are more impacted by marketing than adults are. So when I walk into the CVS in my neighborhood late in the afternoon on a school day, and I see kids from the high school and kids from my local elementary school at the counter buying drinks and snacks after school, right there in front of them, if you stood in the counter in front of a checkout at the pharmacy, is a mass wall of tobacco products. I am absolutely incensed. Not only are they seeing this display of tobacco products, they are seeing it in a place that we all associate with health. How can this be? How can it be that a place that promotes health, that people trust, that provides medication that treats illnesses and disease, also sells products that dicks and kills its users and does so so boldly? An interesting point, the average tobacco display behind a counter in a convenience store, and if you don't take your gas, if you take rid of the pumps, you kind of go in and take a look at the tobacco display behind the checkout there, the average display is 32 square feet. In a pharmacy, the average tobacco display is 50 square feet. Jessica did a great job of presenting the perspective from pharmacists. Pharmacists don't mind selling tobacco products. They take notes stating that they would consider the wealth of humanity and the relief of suffering their primary concern. It is a blatant conflict of interest to place these pharmacists in a setting that sells products that does the opposite, that sells products that dicks and kills its users. Thank you.
People fled us here, and we've treated over 7,000 residents in the capital district helping to witness smoking. And at the end of the year, we follow up everybody, and 30% of those people had come in the very first session at this school. So it can be done, and it's a great thing when it does happen. I want to take it back to 15 years old. I wanted to start smoking so badly, and the reason why I did is because I felt very awkward. And everybody smoked back then, and it was really cool. And I remember thinking, "Look, Judy, you know it's bad for you. You know it can cause cancer. What do you think?" Well, what do I think? There's these people that are leading our community, they're not going to sell kids like me. It's not going to really be all that bad. Come on, that's not how the world works. And I'd say, "All right, maybe it's a little hard to quit, maybe it is a little bad." But I don't really think, maybe selling a product all that bad, I'm going to start smoking. And I did, and I loved it. Problems began, though, I was a very heavy smoker, and I was very addicted. I smoked 50 cigarettes a day and had asthma, not a good combo. So around 20 years old, I'm like, "All right, Peggy, the game's over, we're out of this, we're quitting." And I would try, and I'd eat at noon. Boom, there's the next cigarette. And I'd try, and I'd try, and I'd try. Go to bed every night, I'd be thinking, "This is not this time, you're doing it." And I'd wake up at noon. And I'll never forget it, I was 26 years old, it was noon, another failed attempt, and there's a cigarette. And something very, very profound happened to me. I realized something that was horrible, but I knew was true. I knew that I was not capable for this smoking. Peggy, you aren't a right, you don't have the case, you really don't. And we do know how you're going to die. Unless something unforeseen happens, it's going to be cancer, it's going to be Epstein MERS, it's going to be Alzheimer's. Why not? Now, that's a pretty bleak future, but nonetheless, that would be mine. Several years later, I was smoking, got a little help, and made all the difference. I've been helping people quit ever since. As the Director of this program, you can imagine, we've seen many, many people in various stages of very different health. And when I see that, I think, "What for risk, not for life?" And that's a sad stat, sick to see. Now, let's take a look at the 13-year-olds, the 14-year-olds, the 15-year-olds in Albany County that walk into a pharmacy. Now, they see on one hand pill medications and remedies to help you thrive and be well. On the other hand, they see an abundance of advertisement of a product that will harm you or kill you if you keep using it. Now, we got this kid at an impressionable time, and in that state, when we're that age, it's time to try on hats, try on all kinds of different things, and figure out who we are. Smoking comes up as an option. Do I, or adult I? Well, wait a minute, look at this picture. Pharmacies are healthcare, they're doctors, they're all about health, and there's so many secrets. Nah, I don't think it's that bad. It can be, this never would be this, this would never be happening. The smoker trying to quit sees the same image and says, "You know, I don't know, maybe I don't even worry about this smoking. You know, maybe if you're selling in a pharmacy..." Now, I'm going to say, beyond any doubt, or with any doubt, that in this county, in this room, there isn't one person who wants that kind of messaging going on, day in, day out, 24/7. No one wants that messaging happening in this community. Thank you.
What? That doesn't make sense. How can a pharmacy sell a product that kills 50%? Sell a product that kills 50% of people who use it? That doesn't make sense. How can a licensed health facility morally sell a product to their customers that will hurt them and make profit from them? Because these stores do make a profit from these tobacco sales. And then they get more money than the people who get it after using this product. Do we want to send that message to youth? Do we want to say that this place of health also sells this deadly product? Does our society really value profits that much more than they value people's health? Is this the message we want to send to kids like me and my classmates? I sincerely hope not. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here to give the other staff a story. My name is Michael Wilson. I'm with a trade association called the Food Industry Alliance, member stores in Albany County, including Hennepers, Price Shopper, the shopper of Taylor Jones, and ten stores that are being established. We oppose this bill on two points. The first is that the bill goes way beyond the state intention, and the second is that it punishes responsible retailers. Now, the first point, the bill says that the intent of the bill is to ban the sale of tobacco products in pharmacies and in stores that contain pharmacies. And if you look at the bill, it defines a pharmacy as a facility that sells drugs. The bill doesn't define drugs, so therefore you have to go to state law for your definition of drugs. And how does state law define drugs? State law defines drugs as including both prescription drugs and over the counter medications. So you need to understand that under this bill, you have a small corner grocery store, some of whom are my members, who sell aspirin or tweezers with fluoride, they can't sell tobacco products. So in essence, you have small retailers having to decide whether they want to sell tobacco products or over the counter medications. And I have great respect for the sponsor of the bill, but I think that goes way too far. And on the second point, the people who represent Price Shoppers, Hennepers, and Price Shopper all have full-service supermarkets, carry limeride goods, including tobacco products, many of them have pharmacies. And under state law, you can't have, you can't have self-service tobacco products that can be behind the counter. But my members have actually gone way beyond what the law requires, actually took some pictures, I wish I had big gloves, but some of the other people brought it all, passing around, so. But you'd see that what the supermarkets have done is, they've actually put the tobacco displays in opaque locked cabinets. So when I went to the Price Shopper, I had to ask who the tobacco display was. Same with the Hennepers, let's see, it's in a black case, and then the shop light is actually behind the customer's surface panel, but there's not, there's not a register there, but this black box, it almost looks like a TV, that's where they sell tobacco. So if you want to buy tobacco in the supermarket, you have to approach one of the K8s. They then get a front-end manager to come and unlock the tobacco case, and then prove you, and then you can buy it. So tobacco companies were, people were for in-store signage, I think, we saw some pictures earlier. People like that had foregone that avenue. There's no in-store signage, there's no ads, they've done everything responsible to put it aside so that only adults who want to buy this legal product can ask for it, and it's under a controlled set. So I think it's somewhat unfair that even though these retailers that go way beyond what the law requires, that they're now going to be caught up in this law. And as the last point, I think the legislators need to ask, "What will happen if you enact something like this?" It's not that tobacco sales are going to go away, the question is, where do they go? Do they go with way more internet sales? Do you force more people to go down Scanty, or go across the river to Albany? We know that our shoppers want to have a full shopping experience, and they won't stop shopping. So if they can't get it in Albany County, they're going to get it somewhere else. Thank you.
What in particular do you think is lawful law? What worry do you think is excessive?
Well, it's the definition of a pharmacy, because it defines a pharmacy that's broadly cooperating any retail outlet that sells drugs.
Why is that excessive to you?
Because that includes stores that don't sell prescription drugs.
So as the other speaker suggested, that we remove that definition from licenses pursuant to section 6808 of the state education law, but I'm going to logic that wouldn't be suitable either, right? Because I'd have to sell a couple of pharmacies that would have supervised.
Yeah, I have to look at that section, I think that's actually where the section for drugs is, and I don't want to say without having an attorney, but the definition of drugs, you would think it's in the public health law, it's in the education law, so I don't think that, right, it's the worst thing that was.
You don't consider a drug?
You know what, I'm not here to debate the public health assistance. I mean, our view is that if it's a legal product, adults in America still get to choose, and you think that adults in America should have the right to make purchases of legal products under supervised settings?
Mr. Mag.
Could your concern regarding the definition be addressed just by saying, "Stores" just by saying stores that sell prescription drugs?
Well, that would make it a lot better, but it wouldn't help the other people I represent who are the Price shoppers, Hennepurds, and Shoprites of the world. They're going to great lengths to not advertise and to separate the product from every other item in the store.
No, I'm just wondering if you think that would address the first objection.
That would, absolutely.
Ms. Bush?
Yes, it's just a point of clarification. Sir, we had a previous speaker that said there's 167 retailers in Albany County. Forty-seven of them have pharmacies. Or no, 63 of them have pharmacies, I believe. And I should ask for a clarification, Speaker. I think 47 of them are pharmacies that sell tobacco products. That was her estimate from her organization. How many retailers do you believe will be affected in Albany County according to your numbers?
Well, I don't know. I can see how many registered tobacco dealers are. But as the bill is written today, I think it would affect practically every tobacco dealer except for a smoke shop. Because you capture every gas station in these stores. They all sell things like aspirin or mouthwash or what have you.
So it's every business that would sell even napkin, tweed base?
Any medication?
Mr. Rosen, have you had an opportunity to talk to the sponsor about some of these changes?
I did give the sponsor as an courtesy to tell him how we read the bill to learn that I was gonna testify. Thank you.
You know, I was thinking, I really have nothing to say because everyone has been so eloquent tonight and said so many things. But I actually feel fortunate to be following the gentleman before me because I find myself having a face to say. And I'm no expert on this subject. I don't work in the tobacco prevention or cessation field. I'm just a resident of Albany County concerned about the health of our citizens who has been proud that this legislature has stepped forward on important health issues like family trans fats and calorie labeling. Things that are, you know, maybe small steps, but things that have moved our communities forward in a way that we need to, to build health for our community. I love Price shopper, I love Hennepur, I love Shoprite. They're all wonderful community partners to us. But we know by what we've already heard tonight that they are not going out of business in Massachusetts. So I think we have no fear of that happening here in Albany County. I know the legislative body, then you always have to balance, you know, economic issues with other issues. And in this case, the other issues are the wellness of our community. And there are so many aspects to that that this legislative body needs to consider when you're thinking about the wellness of our community. Not the least of which is the cost, the dramatic cost of healthcare to us all as taxpayers. This heavy burden that we are enduring because of diseases related to tobacco products. Anything that we can do to reduce tobacco use, I think we must do. And I feel that this, if Albany County could be first as the nation's capital, sitting near the nation's capital, absolutely you should be. You know, when I looked at those display units with the coverings, it was great that Price shopper and Hennepur and Shoprite did that. They didn't do that on their own. They did that because they were encouraged to do that over many, many years by advocates who are working on these issues. And I'm glad that they did that, that was the right thing to do. But now they should really do the right thing. And do what all of these small businesses, the local independent pharmacies have done. And take these tobacco products out of their stores along with CVS, along with Walgreens. And if they're not gonna do it and do the right thing on their own, then the legislature has to step in and make them do it. Our small businesses haven't gone out of business. After all, isn't that what we're mostly concerned about? Our small businesses? Those are our modern tops. Those are the people we should be most concerned about. And they're not going out of business. So I don't think we have to worry about CVS or Hennepur going out of business here in Albany County or picking up roots, you know, and hauling off somewhere else. I really hope that this legislative body stands up and takes this, you know, auspicious step and says, yes, this is the right initiative. And then the rest of the counties, the boroughs, the boroughs sue and do the right thing. And that's what I want to say.
Evening, everyone. So I wanted to kind of start off with two, I think, kind of startling numbers that many of us who think tobacco cessation, tobacco vaccination think about. Tobacco use leads to over 400,000 preventable deaths. Naturally, the key word is preventable. It's also important to keep in mind that tobacco products are the only products that when used as directed, will kill its consumer. I speak to you tonight in strong support of eliminating the sale of tobacco pharmacies, or two, tobacco products in pharmacies. And I speak on behalf of three different perspectives. First perspective, as a pharmacist, as a clinician. Second perspective, as a resident of Albany County, as a member of the public. And third perspective, one of my most important roles, as a mother. So the first perspective, as a pharmacist, as a clinician, one of our core national pharmacy organizations, the American Pharmacists Association, has long supported the ban of tobacco products within pharmacies. So there is national support from pharmacy organizations. As a pharmacist, as a clinician, I also provide intensive counseling to patients trying to quit smoking. It is a difficult addiction. Most patients will try seven, eight, nine times before they are able to quit successfully. And probably one of the most struggling things that I see from patients is that temptation, that social environment has a temptation. We see significant information in terms of data showing that we see increased slip rates, increased relapse rates in our patients than they have when they are constantly surrounded by tobacco products. So decreasing that accessibility where when they are going in to meet with their local pharmacy, their local pharmacist, their community pharmacist, their resource, their educator, to get some additional information. Or to highlight and say, I'm kind of struggling with some issues lately. I'm having to pull some of these triggers and I may slip or I may relapse. To not see those tobacco products, that temptation right next to the product, the gum, the patch, the commit lozenge, as trying to assist them in that process of killing. From the second perspective, as a resident of Albany County, as a member of the public, there's a number of U.S. studies that have highlighted that in general, the majority of the public do support eliminating the sale of tobacco products in pharmacies. And as my third perspective, as a mother, I have two and a half-year-old daughter, her name is Isabella. And certainly, I think by eliminating the sale of tobacco products, as Jimmy highlighted, as many speakers before me have highlighted, the goal ultimately is to minimize that visibility, to minimize that accessibility, to make significant impact in terms of reductions on youth smoking. I want a healthy environment for my daughter. And I think we will probably agree that we want the same thing for our children, our grandchildren, future generations. Kind of end in terms of a point that has been brought up a number of times, let Albany County be the first. Let us be proactive, let us be leaders. That the rest of the counties within New York State will say, they did it. They set a stage, let's follow suit. Thank you.
Hello, thank you very much, everybody for coming out here. I would like to mention that I'm an English teacher and a high school track and cross-country coach. And I have tried living my life, trying to make healthy decisions with my life. I actually learned to make those healthy decisions when my mom and my dad, unfortunately, were cigarette smokers their entire life. In fact, I tell my students that back in 1957, when my mother was pregnant, she actually went to see her doctor. And she said, you know, I'm a little bit more nervous for my second baby than I was with my first child. And the doctor told her, well, why don't you take up smoking? It'll calm you down, it'll relax you. And I tell my students that and they laugh because it's totally absurd. 1957, a doctor telling a pregnant woman to smoke because it'll calm you down. The person who mentioned, we don't want to get into if cigarettes are cigarettes or drug or not, well, I saw firsthand that cigarettes are a drug. And so my mom and dad were addicted and they hated it. And they tried many to give up on smoking. And it never worked. But the message to my sister and to myself constantly was, never smoke. And we got into athletics, we lived an entirely different life. I remember when I was a kid coming home, my mom would be dumping out all my candy and I had one of these little boxes. And some of you that are my age probably remember. And you had little toy, little cigarettes with the little red thing. And I remember walking around and it's probably said, and I read, hey, look at this. My parents took that, threw them out, don't ever, don't ever smoke. I mean, that was the message I got constantly. My students can't believe that there were candies in the shape of cigarettes. I mean, we have come a long way. I'm here tonight because my mom and my dad can't be here because both of them died in their early to mid-sixties. But if they were here, they would be here right here tonight telling me this madness has to happen. And if it ends just by stopping the sale of cigarettes in pharmacies, at least that's a start. My students laughed at even the idea that cigarettes are sold in pharmacies. I encourage you to make a bold move, make the decision. Takes a lot of courage. But all good things that we've done in our country have started a very courageous move. Thank you.
Okay, so we have to get out of the problem I thought of. So hi. I'm Erin Ryan, I'm a new Albany County member. I've recently moved to Delmar. And cigarettes, let's see. I'm gonna talk about three of these things. First of all, my grandmother, I should never be favorite among grandparents, but she had been my favorite. And in 1998, she passed away from cancer. She had lung cancer that turned into breast cancer, breast cancer turned into lung cancer, something of that nature. I was in sixth grade and it was really upsetting to me. I remember playing Monopoly with her and she had to take breaks to go smoke a cigarette in the middle of Monopoly. Go out and sit at her little outdoor table to smoke a cigarette. And now in my house, my husband and I have that table. We spray painted it, we redecorated it. But every time I sit at it, I think of her and think, this was her smoking table, this was her smoking chairs outside on the patio. And I think that's really sad that she's not there to come to my house to see what was, you know. She lost her light for that and that's unfortunate. When I was in high school, I was a runner, I was an athlete. I had friends who were athletes. And I had friends who smoked. And I just could not figure out why they would smoke. We'd go to concerts and they'd bum cigarettes off people. And I was like, you are out of your mind crazy. Why would you throw your life away for that? They themselves ran on the tracksing with me. And I couldn't understand that. I haven't talked for many years, but I wouldn't be surprised if they still smoke cigarettes today. And that's upsetting to me that people made decisions because they saw cigarettes in pharmacies. They saw ads in grocery stores in the 2000s. They were everywhere and they made poor decisions when we went to go see, you know, Red Hot Chili Peppers, whatever it was in 2001. But that's disturbing to me that people make bad decisions when people who are good, intelligent people make bad decisions because they encounter them in pharmacies, in grocery stores. Now, today, I am a teacher. I teach middle school in a very rural district. And I see eighth graders who, I can tell have already made bad decisions when it comes to cigarettes. And I wouldn't be surprised if it's because they see the cigarettes right behind the candy. You know, they walk in, they buy magazine, they might have a gum. What is that they see? Oh, yes, that's a cigarette ad. They have older siblings who are 18, 19, 20. And I wouldn't be surprised if they make that decisions because of that. I encourage you, stop the sale of tobacco at pharmacies. It just doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
So you think what? Thank you for allowing me to come and speak. My name is Dr. Bob Bigelow. Family doc who has a clinic in West Hill. Worked among the poor in Albany for many years now. And a resident of Albany County for 58 years. Orders every election. Thirty-eight percent white old patients smoke. That's more than double the national average. These are inner-city folks that are poor in general. And when you sit in the office and you ask them, would you like to quit smoking? No idea, almost 95% of the time. Yeah, yeah, doc, I'd like to quit. Like cans. Nicotine is an incredible addiction. And you know, you've heard this all the time. I don't want to insult your intelligence. You're very bright people and you know how harmful this thing could be. But the lawyer considering this law, Dee, I think, you know, underscores the role of the pharmacy that is taking on in our present-day healthcare culture. Why patients use the pharmacy a lot? Why? Because it's known to dispense healthy types of materials and prescription medications and so forth. Plus it's open more than I am and more than many young kids. And other than our emergency departments, you know, people are looking for access. The young lady that spoke earlier talked about the fact that there will be clinics embedded in pharmacies. This trend is absolutely going to increase. We do not train enough primary care providers to meet the demand. The Affordable Care Act comes in next year and is fullness. Who is gonna care for these uninsured patients that now have health insurance? They're gonna be going to the pharmacies, they're gonna be seeking out healthcare and getting cigarettes out of there would be an important step. I understand this is a thorny issue when it comes down to things like Price shopper, Shoprite and so forth. I mean, I can imagine what Neil Gobel thinks of you guys. He's had it rough the last year or so. But I think I would encourage you to be courageous. I've always been proud of Albany County. I'm proud of it. Because of the courage that our officials have shown in dealing with some of these really thorny issues and putting the health and welfare of our citizens sometimes above the economic issues. And I know there has to be a balance here because I want to be able to get a paycheck, although I haven't gotten one recently, and live in a household of roof fires. I know economics is important. But the health of our citizens far outweighs this. And so I wish you courage to stand up and do the right thing. Pass this bill, you may need to change that language about drugs. You may need to change that language about drugs. Come on, we all know what pharmacy is. We all know what that is. Just get the definition right and pass it. Thank you.
Yet, the average pharmacy quotes 50 square feet with a bathroom space. And if you turn around, you'll see the actual size of the tobacco supply in those pharmacies. Is this a technical, passive adult? Door displays meant through a graphic tool. Do smokers really need this display and don't cigarette the vibe? By any chance, all kids, minors don't need a 48 to 18. Is this a safe option? By banning the sale of tobacco products in pharmacies, we might just stop kids from starting to smoke.
Honorable members of the legislature, nice to be out here today to say that I'm here tonight. I'm Jim Calvin, I'm the president of the New York Association of Convenience Stores, where a private nonprofit trade association headquartered here in Albany that represents the convenience stores and mini-marts associated. In other words, we represent some of the blue dots you saw on the map. Our members sell legal tobacco products in accordance with all federal and state regulations to adult customers who choose to use them despite unknown health risks. The privilege of selling tobacco comes with a responsibility. And that responsibility is to prevent underage sales of tobacco. And I'm pleased to report that we're making significant progress as a community in that regard. Our association is one of the first entities to apply for a team approval from the state health department as a provider of certified tobacco sales training here in New York State. And I personally have trained more than 6,000 convenience stores managers, clerks, and cashiers in the proper techniques for IDing tobacco customers, recognizing underage purchase attempts, and making sure that they don't happen. Now, here in Albany County, your health department periodically conducts inspections of convenience stores and other retail establishments that sell tobacco products. And the purpose is to detect and punish any underage sales that are going on. Now, according to the latest data available, Albany County has a compliance rate of 96.6%, up from 95% just a couple of years earlier. There was a time when I first joined my act 10 or 11 years ago when the compliance rate was only about 80%. That one out of every five health department inspection resulted in underage sale of tobacco. So we've come a long way, partly because the members of ours and other retailers have taken good faith voluntary steps in the form of strict policies within the store. They have trained their people through our program and through others. They've instituted strict rules that if you're boss selling tobacco to a minor, you're automatically out of there. They even hired their own private companies to simulate tobacco inspections to detect any weaknesses in their line of defense. The health department, again, the rate of compliance at 96.6%, that 3.4% failure rate is far below the current statewide level, 5.9%. Even one underage sale of tobacco is too many, we realize that. So we still have a ways to go, but we are making progress and I want to get you aware of that. Now, the main thing I want to say tonight has to do with the definition of pharmacy. When is a convenience store not a convenience store? When it's redefined as a pharmacy in local Albany. That's right. Any retail establishment with Tylenol on its shelf would be classified as a pharmacy under this statute and thus forbidden from carrying any tobacco products. They have long license by the state department of taxation and finance to set. So Cumberland Farms on Route 9W in Corning Mill Road that starts at Capital Bismarck. The new stand inside State Capitol is operated by the Division for Blinds and Business Enterprise Program. It carries cocaine toothpaste. The airport, Ball Bowl Convenience Store on Route 7 in Latham that sells Dramamine. All these stores and others would no longer be able to sell tobacco if they carry those products. So the smaller stores would face the choice. And the choice would be either drop tobacco, which is a core product category that contributes to the viability of the store, or drop the overcount of medications, knowing that a convenience store without antioptic sedative is an inconvenient store. So on lines, I want you to know that we share your commitment to preventing this access to tobacco, but we don't see any justification or any rational basis for defining convenience stores as pharmacies in the purpose of this law. Thank you.